Public comments, no one signed up for the comments. Item number three additions, deletions and approval agenda. Want to add anything? Change, delete? No?
No.
I get a motion.
I make a motion, accept the decision.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Approval minutes? Approval for the minutes? Oh, sorry, motion for the minutes?
Second.
Second? Alright, any discussion? No? All in favor? Alright, unopposed? Next up, item, council member in attendance. Mr. Mayor Horvath, welcome. So as you know, we talked about this, just a chance for us to talk with you, for a chance for you to talk with us, give us open forum, about how to call special meetings to talk, so. More than welcome to step up and just tell us what's on your mind, what your thoughts are, or give me questions for us.
Questions? Brad Horvath, Mayor, 317 Candela Drive. No, I mean, you guys, most of you guys know me pretty well, and I've been around a bit, and the biggest thing for me is making sure that we apply our rules that have been, if you will, written in generations before us, in the ones that we've even written and amended, making sure they apply to everyone equally. And continue to keep Wesley Chapel the place it is. And that's sort of just a basic mantra, I try and live, and try and listen to everyone. You know, I understand that there are often counter arguments to a number of things, and I try and listen to those as well, because sometimes you learn something. You know, for instance, I bring up example was the issue with the deputy that we were looking at our budget, we were looking at the time we're getting coverage for, appropriate coverage, and for paying for, and quite frankly, we're not quite getting it. So, that being said, I was not aware of some issues we have in town, I don't have any kids in school or anything like that, that I can get that kind of feedback, and, you know, we have a subdivision that has had some issues, and I want to be cognizant of that, even though, again, Brandon is only there forty hours a week, so it's only twenty-five percent of the week, tops, that doesn't take time out for other things. So, those are some of the things that I want to, you know, going to keep top of mind, and again, how I can be, my mind can be changed by listening, and I learn from everybody. And so, that's my basic thing. As far as the planning board, first of all, I want to thank all of you for your service. It is, to me, very important to have involvement in the community. You know, we can sit here day after day with no audience, and that's fine. You know, hopefully, it's saying we're doing a good job, and, you know, as I said, the biggest way I can get a crowd is to say, yeah, we're planning for a tax increase, which of course somebody put out, but, you know, which was totally untrue, but in any case, that's the way to fill up the room sometimes, but, so, that being said, you know, we should be doing things up for the benefit of the community, what's best for the community, what's best for the people that are listening, you know, and giving us feedback. And hopefully, the feedback means true. I mean, you know, you all have, call it what you want, a compass of your own, that says, I don't know if this sounds right, it sounds like it's heading off in a direction that maybe we shouldn't go. And that's exactly, I don't want, I don't want any of you ever to think, because Brad says something, or, oh, let's talk for me. So if Brad says something, that means it's got to be so, we need to go in that direction. That is absolutely not true, but I hope you listen. And if you have a point that I'm wrong about, I'll be more than happy to do it. Ty and I met uptown to talk about, with the DOT, to talk about some of the road issues around here with the roundabouts, and get a better understanding of, you know, why, and that is DOT is now weapon of choice, for instance, but I'll get aside on that. And, you know, at the end of the conversation, after talking to them, and Ty's expertise, I felt a lot more comfortable. You know, it doesn't mean I'm going to like it all the time, but a lot more comfortable with that direction. It is an improvement, you know, and you always wonder about, as we said, when the shopping center was built here, when are we going to get the roads widened? And it was actually out for 2027. Well, we're going to get it seven, eight years early. Alright, good, you know, we'll try and get the next section up on T-Doc. It's actually in the long range plan, so we'll see how fast that gets teed up, but that's what I'm about. I think you know me, what else can I tell you? I've got six children, they're all grown, I think the youngest one is now, what, thirty-five? Sounds about right. So, it means I'm getting old, but the thirteen grandchildren, the fourteenth on the way, so keeps me busy, and, but, you know, this is important. I mean, I, no reason to come back, except I thought it was important, important to hopefully get us moving forward, and that's what I like to do, I don't like to keep going backwards, I like to move forward. Learn from the past, absolutely. Dwell on the past, and not be able to move off of that, unless there's something really catastrophic there, no, let's go forward, you know? Let's make sure we don't make the same mistakes again, if we can avoid it, those kinds of things. So, anyway, what, you have questions for me?
Well, we start down here. Mike, do you want to, you have anything for Mayor? Any questions?
About the planning board?
Yes.
Anything?
Playing the word. That's like shoes?
No, not shoes. No, no personal question. I know in the past that the village had, I guess we sponsored a road bill about solicitation or walking, and then it was voted down, or didn't pass. We don't have any evidence in our village on solicitation.
Oh, we do, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
Is it the one, is it the one that the village started?
Yeah.
Or is it the county voters?
No.
It's a village one?
And actually, Janine, I thought was part of the, writer of it. She tried to put another one through during the last two years when I wasn't here, and we said, well, there's already one, what are we writing another one for? So, you know, we amend the old one, or, can you, if you don't mind sharing, when you have, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's the fir-, I couldn't find it along, is the first one? Okay.
Just email it, don't do it if you haven't. Thanks.
No problem, thank you, that was it.
I like easy ones, good.
What do you see as the greatest challenges the village has? The biggest challenge?
The easy, the easy answer, but it's absolutely true, is, and I want to put it as managing growth, but I'll just say it that way, managing growth, just making sure we stay, try and stay true to ourselves as a community, not as Brad, but as a community. People moved here for a reason, and the reason is for the rules that are in place. So, unless there's a good reason to make drastic changes to our rules, sort of where I am, where I stand, and, you know, I have these discussions quite often, with a number of people, you know, I tell, I always tell them, I say, well, you know, some of them, I tell, you guys helped write those rules, in some cases, and, you know, you, when they annexed in, because it was originally done by petition, we didn't have rules, so, I've got to be a little, a little, what's the word, just aware of the fact that you can't necessarily use that either, because the rules are written four years, three to four years after we became a town. So there's a, there's a little bit back and forth, but, again, the rules are what they are now, so, and it's done well.
Non-solicitation ordinances is on website, under ordinances.
Under what?
Ordinances.
What year?
Twenty fifteen?
Twenty fifteen, oh.
Twenty fifteen?
Yeah, oh what?
Oh one.
Oh one, first ordinance that year? Anything else? Alright, just moving on, I got a couple. So, actually, I came on the planning board back in the last one, and we still have to turn off, and Grace has it back. What, now that you've had a couple months, you've seen, you know, the planning board, how bad, what we're doing, have you seen any changes, or do you prove any change, or how's your feeling of the last time, you know, you were mayor with the planning board, and now?
I haven't sat in on any of your meetings, this will be the first one I've been able to make, so, again, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I was the liaison the last year or two between the council and the planning board, but I think it's much better, to be quite honest, to hear from you, John, you know, say it, doesn't mean you all have to come, so, at all, but please don't take it that way, and so, and I do appreciate you making the time to do that, but, hmm, the, the biggest thing is, again, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, is the sounding board for things that come before the town, whether it's originated from the council, originated from yourselves, originated from Tim, and, you know. We're five elected officials on the, on the council, that doesn't mean we know everything. And anybody thinks they know everything, it's, you know, nobody knows everything, so, I mean, the more input we get, even when we don't always agree, the better, but I think we're doing a better job than we did about communicating back and forth a little bit more, you know, whether it's John coming to the meetings and giving us a little bit more vision of how each of you felt on a particular issue, or vice versa, and I'll even offer to do that, I mean, I'll even offer to come down and do those kinds of things. They've got a mic here a lot, too, and can certainly offer what the council said, this way you don't have to read, you know, fourteen pages of minutes or, and that doesn't encapsulate word for word what was said, so sometimes, you know, you can miss the intent, and, that's what I want to keep going, is keep that communication open, and, you know, so that even when we disagree, you know why we disagreed on a particular point or issue.
Right. And I think that's one of the reasons I've asked, we've been asking council to come to these meetings and talk with us, to help us understand, give us a chance to ask us, why did you vote this way, or?
Great suggestion.
You know, so, well, good, I think it's a big measuring stick, I mean, the fact that, you know, you saw us, you know, very intimately three years ago, when we were, you know, here and being liaison, and now, you know, you see us and interact with us, to understand that change and see it, you know, I hope it's been in a good way.
Well, it takes two sides. Any discussion, any relationship takes two sides, can't be one side trying to make the relationship, and the other side just kind of like, talk today. So, you know, I hope we do it as well, and, you know, you have your varying degrees from varying people, but in the end, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction, moving forward, as I'll go back to my, my theme song.
Alright. Alright, so then my, my second question is, for you, is on the conservation subdivision ordinance.
You stole my question.
Would you like that? So obviously, it's gone back and forth, I mean, it was going back and forth, I said back last time you were mayor, and now it's in your guys' hands, and, you know, we're, and now it's back in our hands, I think, today to review a little bit. What are your thoughts on that? I'd love for you to ask us, and, you know, I brought, a couple times, maybe we need to have a joint meeting between the council and planning board over this, like, it's a delicate?
It's so hard to get everybody together, and I think it's been around long enough that, I mean, in all this time until the last meeting, for instance, when Tim did some lovely artwork and some calculations, you know, I don't know that we necessarily, I don't know, maybe you guys did, but I will say the council policy, I think for myself again, really understood the impact of how that would look. And so, from my perspective, I think it's a good tool for the village to have, a good option for landholders. I also do think I like the idea of keeping the cap at whatever the normal build out would be under the zoning for the property, so it's R40, it's R40, I mean, as far as that goes, but if it could be R40 conservation, that means you could put the same number of houses on a smaller lot sizes, and still maintain the overall ratio for the entire property. And that's where, that's basically my overarching guideline, and some of the things, and I don't want to steal your thunder, Tim, but, you know, when Tim showed us his, you know, the work he did, which was very helpful for me, in taking, sorry, taking properties, four different looks at four different properties of, of different sizes, and winding up with, under the formula that exists, with less than, we could be built under an R40 scenario, that didn't sit right. And, and I thought, and Mike actually thought, Mike actually was the one who brought it up, that planning board should see this and have an opportunity to maybe tweak the guidelines a little bit. I still think keeping that overarching, or, you know, one house per acre, one forty thousand square feet, but less than acre, but, you know what I mean. So, that is the overarching measuring stick, and should be, and, but, they shouldn't be penalized, because they go to a conservation subdivision, they get the benefit of being able to put houses in a tighter timeframe, but they get less houses, so, they're not really, in my opinion, gaining. And so, that's what I would like to see us, see the planning board take a look at, and see if we can tweak them a little, whether it's the, what is that, what is that, that term, view your, view shed, view shed?
View shed.
Yeah.
View shed.
Yeah. The view shed buffer, instead of a hundred and whatever, being, you know, seventy-five, I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is, I'm not trying to tell you, whether it's more, you know, allowing a little smaller, a lot, not smaller, I, my opinion would be nothing smaller than twenty, twenty-five thousand, you know, which is half acre, so, I mean, for sure. But, just so that it gives them more of a, more of a, gives the landowner a little bit more flexibility, and still getting that yield.
Okay. The reason I'm asking, just want to make sure we really communicate well between planning board and council, specifically on this ordinance, only because I've seen it go back and forth so many times. I've heard the, what is it you want us to look at? We've already given you the suggestion, and, again, it's kicked back and forth.
Well, you said.
So I just want to make sure, if we're going to concentrate on this, that we both have clear understanding, communication, and work towards what makes the most sense, so, and so I want you to ask and talk to us now, let us know.
And my belief is, the council has that same overall, overall view of, under R40, if you could put ten homes, under a conservation subdivision, you can put ten homes, it's just how do you put them? So, you know, and that's what's not working out right now, the formula based on the parameters that we've all set, whether it's the council set, or the, the planning board set, you know, which, I actually didn't ask you that question, Tim, which set did you use for your calculations?
Well, the key differences were the percentage of conservation area, I believe, and I kind of fledged on that, I just kind of estimate the way it worked out.
Under numbers, yeah.
So, I didn't kind of have a hybrid.
Okay, so I got a hybrid, but again, it was consistently under, that was the point, underneath the yield, is what the actual calculations are coming out from. So to me, that doesn't sit right.
I'll kind of, I'll be showing you some information later, and I'll kind of explain why that calculation, I think it's pretty easy to fix, in terms of, right?
I think it is, but I think it's fair that?
It's a good point to raise.
You understand it, we understand it, and then we get something that's better.
Great. Well, if you're here later on today, we can go with that, I'd love to have your input.
Sure.
So, I got it.
You took his questions.
Well, you did, I had, I had one general question, one specific question, and the specific question was to you on conservation subdivision, so, I'm glad you got that out.
Great question.
Exactly. First off, thank you so much for your service, for you, for you to, to have done this before, and realize the challenges, and then stepped back up to come back for another term, I appreciate that, appreciate your leadership. One of the things that you mentioned early on was listening, and, let me say this first, I don't envy you, or Mike, or anybody that's on council, because of the decisions that you've got to make, and, and a lot of times, the pushback when they come back due to those decisions, without having the ability to listen to, hear on the front side. And I think that's the challenge that, that we face sometimes, is a lot of times, we're making decisions on, on topics that, that we know we're going to hear more about, you know, clear building, for example, you know, it's a topic that is very, very out there with the community right now. How, Brad, how do we go about listening better, so that we can accumulate more information from the public, over and above what we have right now?
I've been trying to solve that for, how many years have I been? Eleven, eleven, ten and a half. We've tried gathering email addresses, that's just not working. We tried a newsletter, which we do semi-annually. I think that helped, but not necessarily is the end-all. We've tried, a survey is not really a way to get information out, it's a way to get information back in, which I think is a good point, and I think we have a number of things going on that we need to do another survey, I think the council is, is feeling that as well. And, you know, one is around, if we're going to go for another park grant, you get a lot of extra points, when they score your grant request, if you've done a survey and asked certain questions. So that's, that's for that part. There's, there is, you know, I think it's ten years since we did the last big survey, and wasn't it ten years now? About ten years, but anyway, that, the, the schools helped us with, where we, you know, we got six hundred and twenty-six or something like that responses. That doesn't sound like a big number, but, you know, it, it, they were very happy with the school, they said this is unprecedented, that you get that, that high of a response rate. So, that calls for an investment, though, you know, and it's not cheap anymore, the mailing costs have come up, the duplication costs have come up, you, you hear a lot of back and forth about how many questions, but to get back to the questions that are rambling on, it's about trying to get that information. The third way of getting information out is we agreed to form a communications committee, because it came up in a number of conversations. We've only got three, three volunteers now, that are appointed, I don't know if they've got any more, since, well, we've got three, three volunteers that have agreed to be on the communications committee, they have, they're going to be, haven't met yet, but they're going to be, and I want to hear their ideas. You know, there are people that have a lot more experience, I mean, I don't have a Facebook account, you know, I don't want a Facebook account, but then again, it's a great tool for getting information out, it's, you know, I'll leave my other comments to the side for now. But, yeah, so I said, we need to, we need to improve on all those fronts, and I'm open to any and all ideas, you know, and, and expertises. I don't necessarily know everybody's background, but, you know, Ty reached out to me on, on an issue with the roads, we agreed to meet with the NCDOT representative, to ask a bunch of questions. That's the way you start getting information. You may not agree with it in the end, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, at least you've gotten the reasoning behind it, and actually made some sense. I think Ty would agree with that, what he told us, why his things were being done a certain way, but specifically, the highlight was that the roundabout being proposed, that I shared with, with everyone, between the two shopping centers. So, you know, they're closing off the left-hand turn, that you could go into Harriet Tito off eighty-four, that will not be there when they have expanded eighty-four. Okay, now you started limiting for people coming out, having to get back under eighty-four, you know, you've got to, and, you know, and that's what, that's what traffic engineers are supposed to do, take all those things into account, but it was good to hear they thought about, something I hadn't, I wasn't even aware of, so. But that's it, I mean, communication is the key, you, and like you said, I think you were implying that people, what they don't know, they're, you know, they're filling in the gap, if you will, and sometimes, you know, I do that myself, when, when something happens, but I don't have the full story, I fill in the gap. I try to find out the right story, and then sometimes it doesn't exactly agree with my a lot of time, but anyway, you don't ask the question, you know, you're going to go off half-baked, so. I try and, I try and avoid that, I'm not perfect, so, same thing, I would, I would even tell all of you, anytime you come up against something, reach out, John, you know, John has no problem picking up the phone, and I encourage you all the same way, or drop me an email, I'll get to it.
So, Mayor, thank you, I hear from what my colleagues have said, for your leadership, and I know that our transportation staff really respect and value you, at least coming to our meetings, as often as you can. So my question for you, though, is this, you travel far away, you see other communities bigger than we are, smaller than we are, probably some size as we are, what's your guiding vision, when you think about Wesley Chapel? What are those top two, three things, of the kind of community we should be there or not, you know?
It's always a fun question, it's not so much what I see, it's what I think the community wants, based upon the feedback I hear, and that's why I try and listen. You know, and, and so it happens, I happen to agree with some of it, and one of the reasons we all, many of us moved here, was specifically for some of these reasons, which one of which I share is, you know, we don't need, we don't need to be, I've heard this before, phrase, you know, we don't need to be everything to everybody, but we need to be a lot of things to most people, and, and, and that's dependent upon what we want as a community. So, you know, years ago, a decision was made that this was the commercial intersection, for instance. I have no problem with that, I think it makes sense, I hate commercial sprawl, and you see it time and time and time again, it does nothing but create traffic issues, and, you know, you can argue about, you can argue about union county needing more business, it does, but it needs a type of businesses, not retail, because retail actually eats as much tax dollars as residential, you need, you know, industrial, you need office institutional, you need those kinds of things to, to really help the county, because the county has an imbalance in residential and commercial, very big. And I, and I'm all in favor of that, I mean, you know, I think, I think, you know, they wanted to put that building next door, and, you know, it was done, and blocks and people of the town, well, but I'm working on that, so. Yeah, I got to get back with Blackstone, but anyway, they, they're doing very good. Blackstone. Did I? Okay. Sorry. I mean, that's, that's, so, but overall, I think we are, we see ourselves more or less as a bedroom community, what I like to refer to as a bedroom community, homes, open space, enough commercial to satisfy the immediate needs of things, you know, you run out for a gallon of milk, and loaf of bread, and those kinds of things. I don't know, there are some people who'd say, yeah, it'd be great if we had all these kinds of other stories, and we wouldn't have to go to, you know, matter of fact, we've heard this from our higher elected officials, I'll be careful what I say, that we, that our tax dollars are running into Mecklenburg, well, why is Wesley Chapel going to be the center of the retail universe? It doesn't, quite frankly. But, again, I've met with Aston Properties already, and try and say, where are you guys going, you know, I'll continue to meet with them, I've left the door open, actually, they're, I'm trying to think what Randy, Randy, what's his name, Brian, Brian, Brian's role is, but, anyway, he's, but he, he, he calls me somewhat regularly now, something's going on, hey, look, I'm going to drop off the phone poles, or if you put them, you know, in your parking lot, or on the curb, next to the curb, and we talked about it for a minute, and we came up to a resolution, or, you know, they had a problem with the runoff from the bad storm we had, they, they came forward right away, and, you know, tried to address it, the runoff that was there, with the dirt and all, so that's the kind of partnerships that we can establish, if we, again, communicate, we'll come back to that one, and that's, that's the point, I want to try and keep alive, is that point, and, you know, are we always going to like the answers we get? Not necessarily, but you don't know unless you ask.
I agree. Anything else?
You brought up the communications committee, and I was wondering what you would like to see communications committee set priorities, I know that's kind of an obvious question, but is there anything that you would like to see us accomplish?
I do that.
I'm not sure.
I didn't want to call you out. And again, I appreciate your volunteering part, so... For me, I think it's, and this gets to be a very hard part. Well, first of all, finding the method of communicating, or methods. I'm not against multiple methods, you know, how do we do it better? But then the "it" is important. So the "it", you know, besides being communication, is what are we gonna communicate? I think if you can take the highlights out of the planning board meeting, out of the council meeting, out of the park and rec committee meeting, and, you know, out of the, what are the? Youth committee?
Safety.
Safety committee, yes. We only have, we don't have a safety committee built yet, but that would be what I would like to see, is just the high points out there. I mean, obviously, you don't have to, if we're calling for a public meeting and it's on an ordinance change, unless the ordinance change is something that, you know, the three of you, and again, why we have a committee is you have more than one person making that decision, but saying... One person says, "Ah, that one's a little controversial to me." I mean, that's a good thing to get out there, so we can hear from people, you know? They'll show up where they're not happy. And that's good. I mean, believe it or not, that's good. I'm not a confrontational person, but I also like input. As a Johnny Five from Short Circuit would go all the way back, so... Input. So that's really what I'd like to see the focus, seeing how we can get basic information out there relatively quickly. And again, multitudine formats is fine with me. There are some rules as a town, Cheryl's a little bit familiar with some of them, with Facebook and other things that you have to be careful with, but, you know, we'll get to it. It's almost a building a day, you know?
Any other questions? All right, thank you, we appreciate it. We appreciate it very much. All right, then moving on down the agenda, our goal number six, new business. Subdivision ordinance, prevent clearcutting.
Is this on?
No.
Good, okay. Good evening, and we have a couple items to go through this evening under new business, and I wanted to kind of, first of all, kind of make sure I follow. I, for my benefit as a minister, to make sure we're keeping our topics kind of on track here. The first bullet refers to the specific call to staff to put together something on clearcutting. The third bullet is the bigger discussion of retention of existing vegetation, which was, as you recall, one of those priorities from the advance, and which the planning board was beginning to task, and which Deb and Dr. Wells are gonna kind of start doing some research on their own. So I'll be talking about that first bullet, and then we'll, Deb's gonna, we'll probably tag team some in the conversation, but she'll be providing some additional information, so... And then the second bullet, we'll get to that, but that is, it's all kind of interrelated about that, but that is a request that came down from the council. So, with the first item, preventing clearcutting, you've seen the material there, that kind of summarizes what I had an opportunity to do. I also provide you with the section of the statute that Board Member Bledsoe presented last month, and just so you could take a look at that and to see what the nature of that was. My question to the attorney, which, and I did have an opportunity to speak with the attorney on contract with the village, George Sisgram, and ask him about the applicability of that ordinance. I wanted to make sure that that was, that part of the state statute was something that applied to the general provisions of municipal powers. It's actually under a section dealing with agriculture and agricultural contracts and tax benefits, relative to people who have forestry management programs. I believe it does apply generally to municipalities, but I don't have a definite word from Mr. Sisgram at this point, so, but I wanted to just let you know what that's, where we are with that. I was able also to identify the section of the County Stallings ordinance that is applicable to landscape in general, but also just the tree protection provisions. And I want to mention a couple things in that ordinance, which I did not have a chance to share with Mr. Bledsoe or others ahead of time, but they do some things which I think is kind of neat. They, first of all, identify the applicability of the ordinance. And the applicability is very important, because one of the questions is, right now, our tree protection provision, like tree canopy protection, applies to when somebody wants to do a subdivision. However, if someone simply wants to clearcut their site, or clearcut, for, say, a zoning permit, or non-residential use, or they want to clearcut and build a house, but they don't have to do a subdivision, there's really no restriction in our ordinance right now to preserve that percentage of a tree canopy. This applicability section identifies all different kinds of things, different activities at subdivisions, but also different types of zoning permits, changes in use, renovations of a certain percentage of the cost. So all these things can trigger provisions of this ordinance that require some type of tree protection. It also specifies the requirements of preparation of a landscape plan for any of these particular items, including any request to consider just a clearcutting of the site, say, for even farming. Let's see. It does have a tree conservation and protection section, similar to what we have in terms of our retention of existing vegetation. And then it also specifies a tree disturbance permit requirement for any type of land clearing or initial initiated construction activity. So I think there is a lot of information in the Stallings ordinance, and you recall that the county arborist, Mr. Smith, referred to Stallings as, he thought that was a pretty good template if we were gonna be considering not just clearcutting, but also if we wanted to be looking at some other supervision dealing with landscaping, so... At this point, I'm kind of waiting, hearing something back from the attorney to proceed on that. And next up, we could get that, digest what might be good to pick out from the Stallings ordinance, and kind of present that back to you. Once we get kind of conceptual approval on what needs to be in the ordinance, I can then prepare some ordinance language, so, if that's agreeable. Or if you want to, I know we talked about whether to treat this section separately from the rest of the landscape provisions. It could also be folded in with that, too, that'd be another option. But I'm proceeding on the assumption that we're gonna go ahead and proceed on this as a separate ordinance. Per your direction. Other than that, I'd be glad to address any questions you might have from your reading of the material. Okay. The second item is, comes down to discussion at the village council level in talking about conservation subdivision. And one of the fundamental steps taken, as you just heard the mayor say, that the number of lots that can be generated by a conservation subdivision should be the same as what could be generated under the conventional subdivision approach. And that is tied back to a section of the subdivision ordinance that really talks about what's that base partial, or how do you calculate that base area that determines your lot yield? And let me just read you this section 402.5, because I'm gonna be referring to that when we go over some of these illustrations later on in the meeting. But 402.5, it talks about suitability of land, and, let me pull this over, sorry, in the microphone. It says, "Minimum lot sizes as prescribed by the zoning ordinance." So R forty, R twenty, that's what they're talking about. So, in most cases, R forty, forty thousand is for every lot. "Minimal lot sizes shall be exclusive of any..." Here's the categories that we exclude and pull out of that basic lot when calculating it. Any required buffer, like the buffer yard along a thoroughfare. And that's basically, anything over ten acres is, that's a fifty-foot buffer, so you need to be taking that out. Open and/or common areas, and there's a couple definitions in the depth in the section that talk about that. It is any type of, like a protected natural area, but also includes any type of infrastructure, like stormwater ponds, roadways. So that's all pulled out when you're calculating lots. Flood plains or floodways, that's designated on the maps, and we picked that up out of the Go Maps for Union County. Any water bodies, lakes or ponds, and any designated wetlands. We were talking about this at the village council level. They, the question came up about streams and stream buffers. It's not specifically called out here. Certainly, when we're talking about flood plains and floodways, that's gonna catch some of those areas. However, there may be some other streams or stream buffers that may not. So I think I included in my material to you email from our consulting engineer, Bonnie Fisher, that talked about streams and stream buffers, and how they're referred to. And I think that this is something that we can fold in fairly easily into the definition of this minimum lot size calculation. And so I'd be glad to address any questions, but I think I'd be ready at this point to go ahead and prepare some ordinance language for your consideration at your next meeting about ordinance. And if I could just back up, we're talking about this minimum lot sizes, just as an example. Say if you have a parcel of land, a hundred acres of sites, and you have, say, some, you take out that buffer area, you have some flood plain or floodway area, you have some lakes on there. You may, say, you may have, of a hundred acre site, you may have seventy acres that's residual. So then your lot count would be roughly seventy if you divide that by, say, forty thousand square feet. Now, now forty thousand isn't actually one acre. An acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, so, but it's, for talking purposes, it's an acre. So that's kind of the short script, but, so that's kind of, gives you an idea about how this paragraph influences calculation of lots, and why it's really front and center, about being important in that, because that is the first step when you're looking at conservation zoning. The basic assumption is that conservation zoning is not a way to increase zoning density or the lot count. You go back to that definition to, first of all, decide how many lots you're gonna be able to get a yield. And then, as the mayor indicated, it's not so much, you're not constrained by the forty thousand square foot lot size, but you can reduce that lot size in a couple of divisions that give the development more flexibility. So I'd be glad to address any questions you might have about this.
Is that the photographs, the drawings that you gave, is that what this is concerning?
Not simply that, it will, that's a big part of it. But that's, the drawings, which I'll share with you later, is to kind of talk, not only with that, but other constraints on how conventional subdivision rules and conservation subdivision rules might apply to the property. That was the intent.
So, question, we're talking about stream buffers, and Bonnie states here about, you know, streams are regulated, it's in the second paragraph there, the stream buffer. Table for the state storm warning. And I've seen this before about defining what a stream is, in a third person's, if it's, you know, if it's on the G I D system, then we'd consider it a stream. Because somebody has a hundred acres, it's gonna have, you know, drainage, we'll say.
Most likely, yes.
When do you start calling that a stream versus not a stream? You know, is that, is there a designation for that? If we're gonna have, if we're gonna specify that out, how do we define what a stream is?
Well, and that's why, if you notice the wording, it's a really good point. So I've included in the wording that's suggesting is that streams and stream buffers as designated under the flood damage prevention ordinance. Because you're right, when you look at the USGS topographic maps, there are different designation levels of streams. Some are, you know, Ty knows this better than I do, probably, that there's intermittent and regular, some that are, have water hollowed time, some only seasonal, and some with large rain events. But this, we're tying it specifically to something that you can see through and be well documented. I thought that was important to do that.
And that will not fall under, will it, have a flood plain?
Well, I think that...
That particular stream designation?
I think the point is that there could be some streams that would be designated under the flood damage prevention ordinance, but may not be designated floodway or flood plain under the FEMA maps. But they're two different sets of maps, and there will be overlap a lot of times, but it may not be a hundred percent of the time.
Let me ask you, when we see lots come down, and we see somebody has an acre property on subdivision, they're gonna build, and the back half of the property might be in a flood plain. How is it that they can count that as a lot? But now we're saying, when you do yield plan, you can't count that as a lot?
We don't count it as a lot.
But they'll have it as part of their forty acres, right? And not probably they put the house.
It has to be in excess of the forty thousand.
Usually, we have that in, as common area, the HOA, and you don't get, keep this out of the individual platted lot. Other jurisdictions do allow that floodway to be in a platted lot, but we don't allow that. You are more restricted than other jurisdictions.
I'll go back to my notes, because I'm sure I've seen that pass.
It might have been in older subdivisions, and, yeah, you know, we shouldn't...
Brad? Okay, make sure we're just keeping the difference between floodway and floodplain, because Candela has at least three lots that are on the east, northeast side, that have floodplain as part of their forty thousand plus. It's not, they're more, they're a little bit bigger than forty thousand square feet, but the floodplain is large. If you took that out, it would reduce another forty thousand square feet, so, to your point. So that's probably one of the ones you're thinking of, at least, would be. So, but I think floodplain, again, is different. You can't get a, you can't put a structure in a floodplain, if I remember correctly. I should be quiet, Tim, go ahead.
Opposite you, your neighborhood, Candela, where the CalAtlantic is building there.
Right.
Right? The other side of Hudson Church Road, that is a floodplain.
Right.
That is a FEMA floodplain, you know, with the building, or, that's when you make the comment about crossing the bridge over, you know, we want the connectivity. You couldn't do that, because that is a floodplain, period. You're not even allowed to, you don't even have a road to that.
But I think that's the floodway, actually, which is, I might be wrong, but...
That whole area of tanyard, Hudson...
Floodway you can't do anything with, I think.
It's a FEMA flood zone, period.
Yes, that's, you went in my way, too. Well, the same way.
Ty, correct me, Ty. Usually, the larger designation is the floodplain, and then you have the floodway is the most intensive, the most protective, you don't build anything. And then that edge from the floodway out is usually called a floodway trend, that's what I would, I've grown up calling it. That's, in many jurisdictions, you can build, but you have to elevate to at least, at least one foot above the one-hundred-year flood elevation level. And unfortunately, that flood elevation level changes over time as people upstream build, and more impervious surface, and the flow increases, and the floodplains rise, and the floodplain widens. So it's not a static movement, and they upgrade that, those maps every ten years, something like that, so...
Then you have it all cut, see? Okay.
Do you, well, I guess the question, do you, do you, as a board, would you like to proceed with the preparation of a text amendment to that effect in the ordinance?
So, you guys will do the plan?
Yes.
Let's see, okay, the third bullet... Let's see, okay, the, the third bullet under item six is the larger discussion of retention of existing vegetation in subdivision ordinance. So this was a priority item identified at the advance. And last meeting, we call it, we talked about this and I think, and I've had a, a meeting with Councilmember Bledsoe. I, I appreciate the time she's put into doing some research on this. And, and I, I talked about just having some time on the agenda for her to kind of let us know what, what the status is and if there's any conversation or discussion. I have to go ahead, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Dr. Ellis and I have reviewed three ordinances from Marvin, Weddington, Stallings, and Indian Trail, and we gleaned some ideas, felt others that I think will help to add clarity and strengthen our ordinance. The, the first thing that stood out to me was the thoroughness with which the, the ordinance was written. I mean, they dedicate, the town mostly dedicate entire chapters to tree preservation. Rather than, in, in our, our ordinance, we have, we have in three locations, our trees ordinance is in the subdivision, and the zoning ordinance, and our, and our land use plan. So it's mentioned in those areas, but it's like the total around, you know, maybe fifteen, eighteen pages, something like that. Whereas in Marvin and Stallings, I mean, they're, they have like thirty pages of information about their tree safety. Marvin's ordinance, for example, it has that states that granting tree removal should be based on the effect of the ecological system, including the erosion potential of the property, the impact of the removal on the value of the property and aesthetics of adjoining properties, and the impact of tree removal on public health, welfare. So they, they look at the big picture, they don't just look at, you know, specifically what's going to happen if we remove these trees. And they look at the whole big picture, which I thought was, you know, interesting. I mean, when you look at recently, this is going into the clearcutting of the, the land on Potter and across from West of Chapel School, the runoff from that property created the definite hazard, safety hazard to motors. And also, there was a lot of public outcry from citizens living in the vicinity, you know, who were concerned about the erosion and aesthetics. And we know that the trees, basically, the importance of trees, they clean our air, water, reduce storm, what runoff, they shade our homes and streets and reduce energy costs and increase property value. I mean, you know, but what we need to do in our ordinance is to have some teeth. You know, Marvin and especially Marvin has real specific penalties. They include civil penalties of up to five hundred dollars, and additionally, fifty dollars a day for each violation that continues. It requires planting requirements in order to replace any illegally removed trees with new planted trees, and a specific timeframe when that has to be done. It has a separate offense for protected trees, like heritage trees, that are illegally removed. So they're very specific, and there's civil penalties. And there's like, you know, an, an entire section on just penalties for violating your tree limits. So they, and they also, one of the things that they'll do is they, they will give no certificate of occupancy or certificate of compliance that will be issued until the violations are taken care of. And they also quote state statutes that gives the town authorities to do that. So, you know, we, Dr. Ellis and I kind of went through and looked at these, sort of spread them all out and looked at some different things. And, you know, we want to take time to make sure we do our diligence and, and make certain that our, that, that the ordinance continues, you know, to serve the village needs. And, you know, I don't know exactly how you want to do it, if you want to have us reporting on a monthly basis or, and just what we're, you know, what we pull together, if you want us to give you, because like I have, I like to have like a, you know, just a table of contents. I like to have a, a separate section. I mean, I would like to see that the ordinance pulled out of the other ordinances, it's in three locations, and put just one location. So we can have a tree ordinance that spans one with, with definitions and a table of content and specific penalties that would involve if you violate this tree ordinance. And, and you know, just to give us some teeth and maybe make it a little bit clearer. Because I had a little bit of a hard time finding the tree ordinance when I was looking for it. So anyway, I just need direction from you folks as to how you want us to proceed. But we're, we're continuing to look over this and, and come up with some suggestions and for, for you guys to consider. Any questions, I'd be happy to have, do my best to answer.
I would, I just spoke with Deb, where, before the meeting, I do have the Stallings ordinance for her. She can kind of take a look at that one and maybe glean some ideas out of that.
Thank you, I wasn't able to get that. I'm glad you could.
So then when you look at the tree ordinance, Marvin had a, a penalty.
Yes, sir.
A monetary penalty, and also then, you know, get you see a, a certificate of occupancy. What penalty did, or ordinance stood out for Indian Trail that you might have about that tree?
They, they weren't as specific, they didn't have as many, it was basically the same kind of thing. They didn't go into as much detail, it was but mostly just, you know, preventing people from being able to build onto it. Let's see. So let's, Indian Trail. Their penalties, it was mostly just the destruction of removal of trees greater than twelve inches, without approval of the town, Indian Trail will incur civil penalties equal to the amount and value of the trees as listed in the Guide for Plant Upgrades with length edition published by the council. I mean, so, you know, they give, it's, it doesn't give specifics like, like Marvin did, but it, it does say, it, it does have an entire section on penalties and hearings of appeals and grievances and such. But it does say that no certificate of compliance will be issued until the, the complaints have been achieved by the person violates it.
I was going to say, the Stallings or, I'm going to read this real quickly. It says, this tree disturbance, penalty for tree disturbance prior to permit approval. Or prior, they didn't bother getting it. Says the penalty for removal of, of, or damage to trees prior to the issuance of a tree disturbance permit shall be a civil penalty of ten thousand dollars per acre or pro-rated fraction thereof. Addition to town stallings under G S one sixty-eight four fifty-eight point five, which is what we distributed to you all. May deny a building permit to any home, landowner who clears land in anticipation of development for up to three years, if willful five years. So that mirrors what's in that state statute. So monetary fine plus a delay of permitting.
Ten thousand dollars, that's substantial.
But, but I like what they said, you said, it's the tree disturbance. That's how they, that's how they listed it as.
Right, and they have that permit, a tree disturbance permit, that it really is required prior to any type of land clearing activity. And that makes it very clear as a, as a step.
So hypothetically, if we had a tree disturbance plan or ordinance, and someone hypothetically up the road had disturbed those trees, that wouldn't be corrupt, right?
Let's take, I'm sorry, say it again.
We have, we have a tree, make-believe land, the village has an ordinance for tree disturbance, right? Tree disturbance.
Similar to that?
Similar to that, right? And an individual sells their property, or another individual buys their property, owns their property, and then they disturb their trees, i.e. clearcutting all four acres. That would have been illegal or violation of the ordinance, correct?
Yes, if, 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 also remember I mentioned that earlier, that other section about applicability?
Okay.
Right now, our ordinance is triggered if you're going to do a subdivision. But if this gentleman cleared land and he wants to farm it, or want to put a house there, that, we don't have any provision saying you can't do that.
Correct.
But if we, if we did have something like this, yes, it would be triggered by that.
If we had something similar to that, hypothetically, then that would have triggered that type of action there. Regardless if you wanted to clear the, clear the land for your farming, cows, or whatever you wish to do with it, you would still have to come to the, you still would have to come to the village and say, this is my plan, correct?
Yeah.
If I read, am I reading into that correctly?
Yeah, it does have a plan, and now I have-
And, and that's something that we would like, is the village, if someone was to take, I don't know, right across the street from here, this forty acres that was mentioned, but we know that's a forest, right? We know that person's going to clear up the land because that's part of forest management and they have the right to do that. But let's just say, down the road, I'll just pick, for example, opposite of Keel's House, by your neighborhood there. If they decided to designate all the trees there, right? That would be legal because they just wanted to clear their land for cows or make a big field.
At, at this point?
Yes.
If there's no, no prohibition. Now, I, I have to read this, I just pulled this today. So there may be some limitation of what the local government can prevent clearcutting for, say, farming or other type of forest management program. I, I have to, I have to double check on that. I, I'm just, I'm just not sure, I don't want to give you bad advice. I don't say you have the authority to just, if somebody just wants to clear or take off seventy percent of their trees, I have to, have to look and see quite, quite the local government's empowered to really manage regularly.
Some of the ordinances that I read and addressed that said, you have X amount of years to do that farming. And I don't think anybody would argue that a, that a farmer could not even clear his land to make room for cattle. But when you misrepresent yourself and say you're going to clear your land for cattle and then you put it up for sale as a commercial property, you know, there needs to be something that can stop that. That's it.
I have a comment. Good job. I, I think this really should be part of the overall ordinance. And then identify areas and existing ordinances where that could be confused. I think that's what I was doing with right now, because we have a separate tree ordinance and a conflicted sidewalk ordinance with subdivision, but it just confuses a lot of things. We go to some communities where we say, get rid of the trees, we just want sidewalks. And we go to some other communities where they say, we just want trees, get rid of sidewalks. I think we just need to look at it clearly to make sure that there's no conflict. This is great work, I really would like to help with this in itself.
Okay. I appreciate your expertise.
Well, we can talk about subcommittee. What happened to our subcommittee, you said a diverse, comprehensive subcommittee, right?
Yes, it, because of all of the legalities and all of the things that would happen, happen as far as it would become a regular committee, you know, like the communications committee. They have to be advertised, you have to take minutes, you have to, and I think there was concern by the board that that might take too long. So what we had, kind of, my understanding was, we, the board's direction to me was meet with another planning board member or two, and, at different times, obviously, I think only two of us committed at time. And just go over some things and make suggestions to bring back to you guys. And then we would, as a group, decide what's okay and what's not. Which I can wait until the very end, or I can piecemeal it as I'm, as we go along and, and make things, whatever's easier for you guys. But that's the, that's why, that's what happened with the subcommittee. It was just sort of an effort to make it a little bit facilitated, make it easier, make it run smoother, not have to make all the, you know.
One thing I was talking about, you know, Councilwoman Conover brought up, remember about getting some other people prior?
Right, right, and I have contacted a developer who's agreed to talk with me on that. And so what we're going to do is we're going to reach out to these community members, developers, Will Ortiz and our, Urban Forster, and we're meeting with those folks on an individual basis and saying, what's your input, what do you think? And so we're definitely not just on us, we're, we're getting, we're bringing back input from the community as well.
Of the municipalities that you have gathered information from, is there one that is close, close to what, what you see as being one that is workable for us in general?
I really like Marvin's. I like the way they handle that, I like the, the way, you know, they're very specific. Their penalties weren't ten thousand dollars, that is pretty intense. I have not had a chance to look at Stallings yet, so when I do look at that, then, you know, it might change things. But so far as I know, Marvin's is, is pretty, you know, I think it's a lot, I think it was like thirty-four pages. But not that it long is better, I'm not saying that, but it just, it's very specific, very detailed, and there's not a lot of left up to, to guess and all that.
All right, anything else? That's great work so far.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
And as much, as much, as much feedback as we've heard from developers and our own public, you know, who've got a difficult tree ordinance to understand. I think, I think it merits that we put time into it to make it understandable. And I also like your thoughts, too, of pulling it apart, rather than being interwoven between three different areas. Set aside as one, as one, as one chapter.
Which is the way the other towns have handled it. They have separate sections for just trees.
Yeah. Nothing else to really hear?
Because it's, I mean, they're, they're important. We can't survive without them. And I know they're a nuisance to some, but they're, you know, they're kind of important to our survival.
If you mean the trees, I want some of the reasons people move to Charlotte. I mean, we're talking to some people, they moved there because of the tree penalties.
Yeah.
So we want to make sure we keep those true. I mean, and when they say Charlotte, obviously, that means the metro area, we have beautiful trees.
Yeah, you do. But do you, would you give me some direction as to how you want to handle the, the reporting to you guys? If you want me just to, I mean, think about it and let me know how you want me to handle that as far as coming back piecemeal information, or just kind of keeping you updated on things, or just wait for a few months? And, I mean, just let me know what kind of, what you want me to do with that.
I like this one, coming back to us and updating them. I think we handle other subcommittees like this, right? Whether it's stormwater or what have you, we did this once a month before on anything you have it? Or it lets us ask some questions, I think?
I'll try to do it, will you?
Well, I see, you're ready for a subcommittee, yeah. All right, very good, great, thank you. All right, I guess then moving down to six D, six minutes for signs.
I did speak with, you'll call that, we talked about this, talked about me getting together with the town attorney, village attorney, to go over the implication of a court ruling on local ordinance. It, it wasn't real clear cut how to apply the provision of the sign ordinance based upon the Supreme Court ruling. So I did talk with George about this, but he had not had a chance to really go through it in much detail. So I've just got to get together with him again. So I'll just kind of push this off, kick this can down the road, to next month at least, and I'll try to get up with him.
All right. Is there anything we can do to know?
Certainly, if you, I would, I would value any comments that you would like to make, take, take a look at this. So yes, if you have any now, or email me with my, I'm always open to mentioning your comments.
And then I guess we move on to E, six E.
Yeah, yeah. Nine minutes, I'm going to process, I mean, we, we talked about this last week, I presented it, I presented, I included my memo again with a kind of synopsis of our discussion. I would, and you'll recall that the, this again was the council who has authority to adopt any amendments to the, to your rules and procedures. That's the way the ordinance is, the building ordinance is set up. They did, would be very much interested in your comments on the entire rules and procedure that you would like. If there are, if there are any, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm jumping to the wrong, excuse me, scratch that. If there are, if there are any, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm jumping to the wrong, excuse me, scratch that. We talked about the land use plan amendment process last week. Sorry about that, last month. And, um, if, uh, you know, the outcome would be some type of explicit process. But as you know, the land use plan amendment process was based upon precedent, it's not written down. But I think the, the idea, and this came out of the retreat slash advance, to have this kind of more, either whether it's codified or whether it's in some type of informal written manner, but just to kind of be more explicit and more intentional about how we handle land use plan amendments. So, and I raised a number of issues on the last page of that. And, um, I'd be glad to address any questions you might have or take in any comments. Or if, if helpful, we could go through each one of those and I can get kind of a straw poll about how you feel and try to put something together for you for formal consideration next month.
I like the fact that she said if the map amendment is denied, there's similar change, change in zoning may be considered for that property within a year of council decision. You know, limit when they can come back and be addressed. And I have concerns about, this is on page three at the bottom. There are some notable differences in the two processes. When it says, with the current land use plan amendment process, the planning board does not have the opportunity to consider the request after the community meeting. I know we didn't follow that. We, this time, we went ahead and, but I'd like something in writing that allows the planning board to do that rather than say, then not have any possibility of, you know.
Or structure, so if you have a community meeting in the process, have that precede any planning board and then council hearing. So you do have the benefit of any comments made at a community meeting.
It just doesn't make any sense for something to come before the planning board and then be considered and then not, then it doesn't come back again once. I mean, what's the point?
Uh, on, on page four, along those same lines, is, are those kind of issues or that maybe we could just kind of go through each one of those? If that's, if that would be agreeable to you all, that way we can start coming in the discussion about what you would really like to see. And of course, this will then go on up to the village council for their evaluation, consideration, how to handle these land use plan. So for instance.
Go over staff recommendations.
I'm sorry? Yes, yes, uh-huh. There were issues to consider and those, those bullets right before the staff recommendations, those are kind of what I see as some of the key issues now. And you just mentioned in, in particular about making sure that the order of, of this is such that you have the benefit of any comments made at a community meeting. And that, that makes sense. And so we could be explicit about that in any community meetings. So for instance, on the, on that page four, we have a memo, it says, it talks about community meetings and other public meeting notice procedures. Excuse me. Uh, should community meetings be required for zoning, map changes, or land use plan changes? So, um, we could talk about that there. So are y'all following from the destiny? Yeah, yeah.
When you're changing your land use plan, that's pretty big in my book. I mean, I say anytime you wanna have something of that significance, you need to have your public input. I mean, that's just me, the.
I agree, especially if you're taking something that would be residential property or land use, right? Which most of all what I did here is ending change into industrial or business or B one, B two as it is now. That would severely impacts the area multiple ways. Yeah, I think there should be a little bit more discussion on it than just, yeah, okay, B one.
I'm sorry, I agree with that to a point. If historically that piece of property has always been something other than what it's shown on the land use map, then I don't think there's that big of a deal going back to, um, the convenience store.
Espinoza.
There you go.
Espinoza, Neem's Market.
Yeah, that, that has always been a business.
Correct.
Always been a business, you know? And the, uh, the steps that he had to go through to get that resolved so that he could have a business on a piece of property that's always been a business? That, you know.
I agree with you. I agree with you on that. But the point is if you, if right now, a lot of our land, as we know, is residential. It's just deemed as residential or agricultural. So if you just take a big piece of the agricultural land and now I wanna make it into B one, the way it is, then.
Yeah.
You have to have, you have to have some sort of discussion about that besides who's ever gonna be in planning board. No thanks.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I suggest we can kind of go through this? Like, for instance, the first, the first bullet says, is a single process, a better approach namely, have the same for many of the zoning ordinance and land use plan. Is that, do you, do you wanna have that, or do you see that the land use plan is substantially different? So you should have something different. Right now, the zoning process is such that applicant files request, we have a meeting, you take input, it goes to the council, advertise a public hearing, public hearing is held, and then a decision is made. With a similar meeting to, process to that makes sense for a land use plan amendment. There's not a requirement for a community meeting unless it, Cheryl, Cheryl, maybe if there's a conditional use does require a community meeting.
Yes, yeah, it should.
Yeah, my concern is the plan is a community property, right? Because, I mean, it's an issue of public trust. If they voted to adopt it, then anything that substantially changes to that plan should go back to the community. There should be a sense of, you know, okay, this is gonna change. An effective process obviously is a single process. If the person submits a land use plan amendment with a zoning petition, it should go together for that plan. But I still believe that when you are mending a plan, there should be community involvement as part of that process because it took the community effort to make it happen. And that's the way I look at it.
To echo all that, to quote a very intelligent man, the plan is the community's aspiration. Zoning is the law governed, governed by the what, the how, it could be done on the property. The focus of planning is the future. Zoning is the data strategy. I don't, I don't think there's any way that we can, that we can make it a single process to cover both, I mean, land uses.
I agree.
Could be, could make up a picture.
Yes.
Okay, so, so you're saying that we need to go with land use plan first and then zoning after, okay? Now, in terms of what, how each of those are handled, you think that you go, are they, are they, would they be similar in terms of how we handle them? You wanna like, would you like a community meeting, planning board, council for land use plan and the same going forward for zoning, zoning change also?
I mean, if it's conditional zoning, it's required, right?
Yes, it's conditional, yes.
So it's gonna have to happen.
Yes, but it could be a general zoning, a general zone.
Oh, a question. What is, what is the benefit of, so if I'm a developer and I wanna rezone a property and, and build it? I can just come forth and just ask for a zoning change? Or do I need to ask for a land use plan change, correct? And then still end up the same result, the same people, same community, all review what I plan on doing? So if we don't link them, they are separate, why would a developer come and ask for a land use plan? What's the benefit?
Well, I, I, I won't process it without a land use plan amendment.
So I keep hearing this back and forth. I hear it can't be processed. I hear, well, yes, you can, and then now can't.
We, we don't, the, the land use plan amendment process is, is not stated in the ordinance anywhere as a requirement. Uh, but, um, because of the linkage between planning and zoning, there's been a theory here, history here of having a land use plan amendment, you know, precede the zoning. And state law, there's been a change in state law in the last five years that really tried to bring that linkage between planning and zoning more. That's why you have these zoning consistency statements when you have a zoning text amendment or a zoning map amendment, something like that. Are you being consistent with the plan? Trying to force planning boards and councils to, to consider the right factors when you're making a change to zoning.
So about R forty property, and I wanna go to R E. And I come to you and say, I wanna rezone R eight. You're gonna tell me I now have to come forth and do a land use plan update, you know, a land use plan change? So I can ask for my residence to R forty, to R eight?
Well, that's a little unusual situation because I think.
We did this about two years ago. We had some.
Is that why they amended, that, that amendment?
It was R twenty to R forty.
Oh, sorry, R twenty.
Well, theoretically, I guess, could, we, you just have a.
You have eight acres.
Yeah, well, the.
You have an R twenty, so you want a R forty.
The, the land use designation.
And a top rate corner.
Is R forty through R sixty and R eighty, and then the medium density residential is R twenty. So if there is a change between that medium density to high low density or back forth, then theoretically, you should try to encourage that the plan to be consistent with the zoning map.
Right, right. And so for instance, this gentleman who did that, that's what I'm saying, if someone came and wanted to ask for that again, you, you outline, we need to use, do land use plan first, we're gonna do, we need to do all that. If that approved, then you're gonna come back with a zoning request. And that, that may be too much. I mean, I think that was one of your questions here, is it too lengthy of a process?
I, I don't think so. We had the, the developers who recently came to us and asked for a land use plan change, was trying to clear the path so that he could have the same properties then rezone. And there would be nothing that the town could say because we've got land use plans there. So I think he was going about it, you know, trying to change the land use plan so that he could then go and ask for zoning change. If he came to us first with a zoning change, it doesn't fit the land use plan, we're gonna say, no, you know, it doesn't fit the land use plan. But if you change it to begin with, then it would clear the road for him to do that, so.
Well, and that, that's where I was asking the question before, is you can come in and change a zone without a land use plan. It's been done before. You say now that we won't accept applications for a zoning change without a land use plan, then you won't process it. Consistency?
Do we, not, not to change, we have to make separate law. We haven't had any, we really haven't had any change in zoning since I've been here, so, uh, I'm assuming that.
Like with Candela, they came in and they requested R twenty. Zoning change. They, they were refused.
They were, they were refused the application?
No, they went through the whole process. We had a public hearing. They were denied the request because it didn't fit the land use plan, right? We wanted to keep it our.
Was there also a land use plan amendment request?
So that's my, that's my question. What is, so if we, we develop a land use plan process, change process, that's not linked with a zone, what benefit is made developer, like, I think it's a Candela? The, the, why do I ask for land use plan? I'll just do a zoning request. I'm still getting the same answer from council, from planning board, from the community. It is acceptable.
Maybe a better way to say this is that in your process, it, that would be the kind of, maybe lay out the process that any type of change of zone requires a change of land use plan amendment as well. If it, if it changes the designation in some way. Cause it, it's, it's gonna hurt the applicant if they're requesting a zone change as contrary to the land use plan amendment. If, if they don't, if they were not to make the, if they're not upfront trying to make the plan change. They're not trying to change the policy, that would affect the rules.
Oh, no, of course, yeah. You see what I'm saying? They get the same answer, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if I sit there and say, well, it's gonna be beneficial to have a land use plan changed before I ask for a zoning change. But I get the same answer if I just put in a zoning change request. I'm gonna know whether I'm allowed to do this or not. Not because I don't have a land use plan, but because, you know, the community doesn't want this, the community does want this. So it becomes almost a, you know, a process that's not.
I'm not sure I agree because if you say somebody came up with a, a land use plan proposed change that wasn't controversial, but, you know, and I can't think of anything.
It's gonna go from R twenty to R forty?
Yeah. You know, that they could approve, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that just because the land use plan is there doesn't necessarily mean it's, it's, I don't, I don't, I'm not exactly sure how to say it, but it's.
I locate it as, as, correct me if I'm wrong. The, the land use plan is a policy document. It's really what sets different, what for how we wanna grow, what we wanna look like. Typically, what developers would do, kind of want to go through the shortcut route and come through the zoning piece. And then when they come through the zoning piece, even if the land use, their question is inconsistent with their policy, they want to use the zoning to be the vision piece for us, but we already have a vision. We should be able to say that my vision is what's guiding us. In order for you to use the zoning as a tool to implement the vision you have, you gotta go through a vision process and policy amendment. We may, we may say it's okay, you may say it's not. But if the vision, if the policy is not a substantial difference from what they're asking for, most sure that, I mean, we'll see, it's all right.
Well, actually, that was a point of discussion we had at the last land use plan application, was don't show us what you wanna do. Cause you're asking for anything, right? And they were trying to show us their vision. And we're saying, we don't wanna see your vision. And that, that argument could go back and forth. And that's why I think you should look in together personally. And so not only can they show us their vision, but then we approve it. And we approved the land use plan change specific to that zoning request of that vision specific. Right now, it's, okay, our vision can be changed, but only for this, and we're tying those two together. And I think that was the problem we had in the last one, is it wasn't tied. And we were like, wait a second, what, you can do anything once we change the land use plan. You come back with any zoning request in that zone.
Problem was that they were showing specific uses, that they, that was not official. It was, it was, uh, an attempt to sell their project. I think, I think, I agree with, I think, if you, the, the concept of, does that spot of red on the map need to be, is this size now, does it need to be, can it be this size? Does the, does the community want this much more commercial at this location? And that's kind of the, the first discussion. And then either along the same line, at the same time, or afterwards, here's what is to be proposed in that red. That's a separate question. How to, how to make this work better. Once you make, once we accept as a community, you know, we can accept, we think more commercial is a good thing.
I, I agree with that. Why do we, why are we going to look if we already have side A, side B, and it seems to work, right? It's a two-step process. Why are we trying to streamline it to be a one-stop shop deal here when it comes for this? But I was hoping that somebody wants to add room onto their garage or something like this. We're talking about taking a great amount of resources, the land, and then deeply impacting the rest of this for the years to come. And honestly, the problem is taking a moment when we don't have certain ordinance in place to begin with to, to facilitate the, the drive-through window of planning. Hey, I wanna get this and let me keep going to my next stop. I, I like the fact that there's two parts here, and every time that you can have the community and the people go pro or con against it is the right way for this to go. I mean, we've all been agreement since we've been here, there's a lot of loopholes in our, in our ordinance book. And Deb has done a fantastic job of looking at other agency for trees. And no offense, we don't, you know, waiting back to get back to the lawyer or somebody else to give back the answer is, we know it already. It's been told us countless times that I've been here, one house, one acre. We like the way it looks. We really don't have to run away and change it right now. And I, I really stick hard to that. My, my issue is here sometimes is the gentleman, or the person who, like Ms. Mullis, wants to develop her land, right? That's her name, right? Was that lady who did that? And she had the issues with the trees. I want her to develop her land if, if she wants to sell it after being in her family a hundred years. But I want it to done the right way and passed it to our ordinances because they were here as, as original, as I call them. I don't wanna put undue constraints upon them, but at the same time, I don't wanna make it just one-stop shopping and just leave.
So I guess the question I'm hearing is, do you want to, do you wanna allow someone, a developer, come into a, a petition that contains both a change of land use plan amendment and a zoning, which goes through the process at the same time? Or I'm hearing, you, you're, I'm hearing perhaps the chair saying that, yeah, it makes sense because then we can define. Or I'm hearing, you, I'm hearing perhaps the chair saying that, yeah, it makes sense because then we can define what we're seeing, but then I'm also hearing that it's good to have consideration of the policy before we really think about the rules of how we're going to do that.
And I'll bring up John, wait, if someone says, I'm going to build, I'll make something up, an ice skating rink right here on this property, because we need one, we need a pool. But they don't get the backing, or it falls through, or the economy changes, or that person gets up and leaves, or goes someplace else. But they have it on our plan that they're going to build a pool slash ice skating rink, but we've already changed the zoning for it, you see what I mean? Now, somebody else comes in and says, hey, listen, I love Westwood Chapel, I want to build a horse rink here, you know, horses, but-
They can't.
They can't, so now they have to go through the whole process again, and they have, we've allowed them to, with the land use plan, and now we want to see what specifically they're going to build on that spot, and it may not be able to be built, there may not be the need for it, the money. You may want to build the horse area, but really, it's not going to work. And then when that collapses, let's just say it collapses, and nobody brings their horse there, now he's going to turn around and sell it, and it's already been changed, now I can do what I want with it, correct? Because they don't have to come back to us, I built a big horse corral, you see what I mean? Well, now I want to build something else there, like stores, for example, or a horse.
And I think that's the beautiful thing about linking the two together, because the first guy that wanted to build an ice skating rink, if they're not, he's going to come and say, I need a land use plan change for B two. Like, wait a second, he put anything in there, B two, he put in, you know, another gas station.
Yeah, but then we come back to what we already have in the books, right, we have conditional use, so when you say it's specific-
Just when we're talking about the land use plan, if he just has a land use plan by itself, the plan is going to say, a B two use, right, that's, that would be the request.
So you, you want to hold then specifically that they're going to build, example, an ice skating rink?
I want to give them the option to do that.
So it's B one ice skating rink, right, and now they can't get the money to build the ice skating rink, now what does he do with it? We, we take away the B one, with the B two designation, and now they have to start all over again?
Well, he'd have, he would get the land use plan change-
Okay.
And conditional use zoning-
Correct.
Or specifically, the ice skating rink, just like any zoning map.
Say at, at this corner, somebody wants to build an ice skating rink.
Right.
Okay, right now, the property is, is under plan, is R forty zoning.
Right.
Cannot do it, okay, so if he, so he would need to do two things, change the land use policy-
Correct.
From the yellow-
To blue or something.
To, no, to high intensity commercial.
Pink, okay.
Okay, so that's why he needs to change there, okay, so he's changing the policy, that's why the community, through the public meetings, saying, we, we all agree that, yeah, we can handle some business at that location.
Okay.
And then he comes back later, says, okay, I've, I've got plans for an ice skating rink, but, well, I can, I can do two things. I, I don't know exactly what I want to do there, but I want something business, so I'm going to come back and request that you rezone this, this pretty red color, B one, general. And looking at table of permitted use, and I got, got fifty different commercial uses I can put on that property. And the, and the council, planning board says, council says, no way, I don't, I, I, I should create a pay week, it's fine, but, you know, you could set up a bar there, because that's allowed, I don't want that. So you say, okay, well, I'll go back, I'll put a site plan together, a conditional use, and I'll tell you exactly what I'm going to do with the property. And so you say, well, okay, I'm going to do an ice skating rink, and you come up with plans, show parking, landscaping, everything, and great. So they approve that, okay, we can handle that, but then you say, my, my, my backing, my financing backed out, so you're still stuck with that use there. In that case, you got to go back, get another site plan, and another backing, another use you can do, and you get scheduled for the process again, so. So from the perspective of you as a developer, if you do, you don't have to hold that thing.
Okay, that's fine.
From a developer, if you do general zoning, you got lots, a lot more flexibility, you don't have to go back and, and come back to this board all the time, okay? But the board is going to be more suspicious of you, is not going to be as trusting that you're going to do a good job, because they don't control and allow the permitted use. That's for the conditional use, then it's a, it kind of is a contract between the community and the individual property, and we understand what you're going to do, and we'll accept it. We'll let you do more with your land at that location, and we're really willing to put up with more of the traffic and the change in the characteristic of that site from a residential to business. So we know what you're going to do, and you've shown we're going to, you know, treat it up with, with plants and everything, it's going to be nice, it's going to be acceptable. But, but if, you know, you could go around, if you had just general business, you could sell to anybody, and they can do anything they want to, that's allowed in the zoning ordinance.
I understand that, he's, John is saying specific, and I'm saying, I understand that level part, but I was looking at it as, once I change that land use plan, I make it from yellow to pink, okay? I say, no, it's okay if you develop something there that's out of the norm, I'll use that word, right? Now that falls through, okay, who's to say, the next person goes, we do allow them to do that, maybe not that plan, but you still allow, you change your vision for that to be commercial, just say, for this example, okay? Can I still get the cap back out of the bag, can I get the cap, whatever, you know what I'm saying? Can I change that back to yellow? Because, because when he said specifically, I like the fact that you want to build a pool and an ice rink, that's okay. But, and I'll give you that commercial land to build it, I'm making it commercial for my land use plan, now you pull back, now some other developer comes and says, hey, what about me, let's be fair. You were willing to change that to commercial, I don't want to put an ice rink there, I want to do something else.
That's why, that's why that first decision is so important.
I know, I agree with that.
It, it isn't about your one specific use, it's about all the array of uses, everything business, and that's one of the other points in that sheet I raised. When somebody's talking about a land use plan amendment, should you prohibit them from talking about specific uses completely? Because that was the point of confusion with the whole discussion about Mr. Moses' property. He first of all came in, it was just a land use plan, and that's how he paid his money to come through, but the first meeting that he came through, he had PowerPoint showing a new urbanist approach to a nice shopping center, you know, Dunkin' Donuts coming in, he had the park, he had all that stuff, none of that was official. And then, of course, it changed quite a bit to basically three parcels developed in a pretty average way, you know? And that was going to be the basis, that's what he wanted to do, and, but there were, with the, with the plan amendment, there were a whole bunch of different things, if he said, well, you know, I'm just going to sell this. And he, but, but obviously, when you change that plan amendment, you're increasing the value of the property significantly.
We all understand that, and now it goes to, that's why I like it as a two-stage process, and this is, what about me?
That's the safe way of doing it.
On this corner, I allow commercial, what about the two other corners on the side of that road? Or another corner, or another lot, bigger lot up the road, and I can satellite and say, well, you allowed it here in your vision, how about me?
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's part of that initial decision, whether you're going to allow or would choose to allow that change in the designation, you know? How big do you want that to grow, because you're right, you know, you can't, that person may want that particular property, but, you know, from the point of view of the board and the community, it's going to be pretty hard to deny the adjacent property owner or the other properties in that same intersection, that same right.
Correct. And, and that's why I like the two-step, the process of it, because you get the community feedback, but you also then take the time, and look, what is the bigger picture down the road? Now, we approve that, and they want to build a traffic roundabout, or a full lane highway, or the roundabout falls through because there's no money with the state, whatever, I'm just making things up, but we don't, we don't know, and I'm not against that, but our responsibility is planning for the future and to make the best decisions on the land, because as we all know, we can't get it back.
Yeah, you're right, and that's the benefit of the comprehensive plan, because it allows you to take a bigger picture view, not only that property, but the whole area. Because that's, that's the whole, that's the whole intent of the comprehensive plan, it is more inclusive of, of a wide, wider range of, of issues facing residents.
When you said it yourself, it's safe, and I agree with Mike, it's got some two-step, I mean, the land use plan, it's apples and oranges, the land use plan is, is our vision. Individual zoning things, they're individual zoning things, I don't think they should, or you should streamline it, I think that's big, when you change your land use plan that was, that took a lot of time to put together and a lot of minds to do it, it should be harder than just saying, okay, let's, let's do it at the same time.
Let's be honest, let's just, you're still there on bridge, I don't know what that, I know what our Phillips looks like, let's just say our land use plan now changes, right, again.
This is my, my Van, Van Halliwell.
Very quickly, so say our, so say our land use plan as, as eighty-four improves, right? The land, the land across Southwood Church, Dogwood Park, becomes more valuable, because the road improved, and it's easy, accessible, and the land going, coming into our village improves, then downtown then shifts from Newtown Elementary School closer to Dogwood Park, or when, let's be honest, when the old Evergreen Parkway gets built, which I'm working on right now, our lane structure then switch, switching going upwards would Spirit of Joy, and all that woods right there in Wesley Chapel, would be a church with a new traffic circle, you see what I mean? The, the land use plan would, or commercial could change itself, that direction.
Mr. Coleman, you got a problem?
I haven't, the main reason I came here today was for the subject. I, you know, I hate government red tape, but in this particular situation, I like the fact that it's a two-step process, that you have to deal with one map, and then when you go with that map, you can come to the next map, you know, change the concept first, then change the zoning second. If we're going to piggyback these all together, we're making it too easy when, the next thing we know, someone's going to say, well, I just noticed they started digging up the yard, or digging up the property behind my house, what's going on? They said, oh, well, we, we rushed through a zoning and a land use plan change in thirty days or sixty days, and you didn't know anything about it, and oops, and all of a sudden, you're, you've got a shopping center in your backyard. I like the fact that it is a slow two-step process, so that it gives the chance for input from the residents, and for us to consider what can be done in different zoning medias. We can't say specifically, yes, you can put this there, but no, you can't put it over here, that's why we have usages of under B one and B two and all that kind of things. I like the fact that it's a slower two-step process. And I agree with Mike Holton and Ty.
Me.
I didn't, sorry, I didn't hear anything from David.
He said it earlier.
Okay.
David.
Okay, so, I'm starting to jot down some notes how we're structuring, so we're going to, we're going to recommend a two-step process, I mean, you do the land use plan first, and then you do the, the zoning afterwards. Second of all, in terms of the public hearing process, each one, you want to have each do the same steps? You want to have, like, when, when there's a land use plan amendment, do you want to have the same public review process that you have with the rezoning? Different time, but same way that to engage the public?
I'm going to ask you this question, if you see, and I go by your words wisdom, it doesn't make any sense, does it? To have to make, do two parts in that, does it?
I mean, you just don't want to, you do not want to create barriers with the landing process. It could be two steps, but there's got to be one that's longer than the other, and that's really where we've got to really compromise there. The way I look at it, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, if you have a plan that's been brought into by the community, by the council, it's adopted, and we all love it, it's gone through the process, and amendment, then of course, if you have that, then you don't need a rezoning petition, someone can come in and say, I want to do exactly what your plan says, okay? But if you amend the plan, and it goes back through the community process, have the rezoning petition, should not necessarily have to go through a community-wide thing, but rather restrict it to those who live in the vicinity of that particular development. And I don't know how we want to do that, but it's got to be a different way to do it. The way I'm trying to structure this right now, where I work, is just like that, to make sure that if you come in the first time, and you, I mean, I'll tell you, what we're doing here is better than what Charlotte is going through, Charlotte is a big mess right now, you know what I'm calling that? We don't have a comprehensive plan, so kind of just do it, allowing zoning to dictate how development goes. And I'm trying to take us back to having a comprehensive plan first, brought into by the community, and then the zoning piece comes into that. But the zoning piece doesn't necessarily engage the community as much as the policy, vision piece, because it's so technical, it's so detailed. People just don't want to get so involved in it, because then it confuses a whole lot of people. So the way I see it is that let the community, let the first step of the land use plan piece be the one that we involve the community, but we've got to find a way to compromise on the second piece when it comes for the zoning amendment, the zoning petition itself, it doesn't have to take as much effort. Although I know that can be tough, I'm trying to convince council right now about that. But the point is that if you already have a plan that tells you where you're going, and the zoning piece does not deviate too much from what it's asking for in terms of amendment, you can pretty much do what you want within that sphere, so, so to speak. So instead of taking someone through a six-month process, and discourage them, and they're going to go to the next community to develop, we don't want to do that. We want to keep them here, but we want to make sure that we're streamlining two processes that it doesn't become too frustrating, I think it does.
Yeah, that's a really good point, so you don't, we need to keep in mind, we want, we want to have, make sure that these things are given due consideration by the community, but these landowners have rights, and they have their right to petition to use their property legally and lawfully, and the, and the state legislature has, they have the legislative idea. Very sympathetic to when they perceive that property rights are being trapped, so we want to really avoid that, and don't want to give the appearance that we're being too onerous to property owners who use their, want to use their land. So what I think I hear you say though, and, and just, see it, see how this goes, is for the first step, we have a land use policy question, someone wants to come in and change. You have, to start the process, you have a community meeting, and then you go to planning board for this consideration, formal recommendation, to village council for, for final decision, then if, if they want to proceed, they start with their zoning process here, but don't redo the community meeting, but just go with the planning board and the council.
As long as it's well advertised so that the community knows.
Yeah.
You know, because-
My point, he was, David, how many, how many times you need somebody to come up and tell you that traffic and crime is the reason why it's not done, or something similar to that? Like you said, just have, when you said the, the land use part of it, and not when you come back and you're going to talk about the more technical part, this I said about the zoning part. And what I was bringing that back to you was, we talked about the signing, or how they're going to do the nuts and bolts of it, and not the passion that the public has about, what they're passionate about, we should say.
Well, the advertising is real important, now, for zoning, it's, it's pretty much required statutory requirements, I mean, you, we post signing the property, and as you were talking about, it's kind of, the adjacent property are given preferential treatment, because they get special notice mail of a meeting and of, of their proposed change. So certainly in the immediate vicinity, you know, people are aware of what's going on, and of course, we're such a small community, you know, everybody knows kind of when something is, when something's happening, you know, like that. But those are the two main things statutorily for zoning, you don't have that same requirement for land use plan, now, when we had the plan recently, we did post signs on the property for the land use plan amendment, and we did mail out letters to adjacent property owners. So how we want to notice that is, you know, we could give that some thought, do that, and I, I would say that we, you know, we could do that, it's time-consuming though. And just to keep that in mind, you know, you know, community meetings and doing all the postings and advertising that's not statutorily required is an extra drain on staff time. So just, you know, we keep that in mind, because you, you know, you don't have a big, big staff and a lot of time.
Well, what we did, unlike the conditional zoning, was we required that the developers write, produce, print out the letters to everybody and address them and stamp them, and they brought to us to mail, because that totally took the burden off of us.
Now, when you say developers-
And add it as no problem.
When you say developers, it could just be a single landlord that wants to, I'm just, I'm just trying to look at all aspects of what we're talking about. Single landlord that wants to change his property from R twenty to R forty, was suggesting the same thing, right? That, that single landlord would have to follow up.
Well, you're talking about an up, I don't know, downs, you're talking about when you're going from a, a certain state to a left- when you're going from a certain state to a less dense. Maybe there should be a difference for that.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, it's all encompassing. Something as simple as that to a developer, I think we just have to make sure that we understand the word, talk about something that's gonna impact all aspects of anybody that wants to, to change land use plan or zoning. And so, I just want to get back to this, what I got before real quick, is a developer, even if you adopt this, someone could still come apply for a zoning change that may not be consistent with the land use plan.
That's true.
And they could go through that procedure at the same amount of time as a zoning request, obviously as a zoning request change. So if we have a, if they, if they instead say, well, I'm gonna do the land use plan change first, if I get approved, I gotta do zoning change, like I said, it could be a six-month process. Well, it's all written in the books, they could say, well, I'll just do the three-month process and do my zoning change, still get the same answer, because I'm gonna, it's going through the six-month process.
Well, now, you're talking, are you talking about the situation where somebody's going from R forty to R eighty, a less intense use?
Any zoning request, right?
Well, there's a diff, well, I'd say there's a little difference between somebody who's going, say, from R forty to R eighty to R forty to B one. That's where you're gonna get people's attention. You know, if you're, if you want to go to, from a big lot to a bigger lot, you know, no, it's not, it doesn't happen, first of all. I mean, there's really no motivation for that typically. But the real key is what we're trying to think is that when, when there's gonna be a substantial change in the intensity and the use of the property, that's gonna be of interest to the community. And, and I would even say in that case, that it's, it's good to go through that process. But you raise a really important question and make sure that you all understand that. If somebody goes through the process and gets a, for, requests a land use plan amendment and the council turns them down, they can come around and request for a rezoning change regardless of that, because the plans and zoning don't have to be consistent in North Carolina. That's one of the strange things, so.
But you've got more legs to stand on, like, it doesn't agree with your zoning, your land use plan.
Yeah, I mean, it makes it more, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's to the benefit of the developer if he gets that, basically the community buy-in through the land use plan amendment.
I think a big part of it is that the staff generally will recommend against it if it's not in conformance with the land use plan.
Yeah, pretty much all the time, yeah. Unless there's some major change in trending of growth, who had this tremendous input or a major road goes through and it just changes the character of the area, then, you know, the staff could say, yeah, based upon changing situation, we feel a change in the plan is justified or something like that, you know? So I'm hearing two-step, I'm hearing, I, you know, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm trying to make sure we don't, are not here all night either too, so. So if you want to do the land use plan amendment, community meeting, planning board, council for the zoning, just do the statutory requirements of the planning board and council, unless conditionally you do zoning, then you get the community meeting again as well. And we can notice them as, yeah, certainly zoning is required, but land use, we could do similar notices for a land use plan amendment if that's, if you would like.
Did you say a public hearing for council for the land use plan?
Uh, yes.
And notices?
Yes, okay. I'll say that's kind of, we'll kind of do the duplicate notice requirements for zoning and the land use plan amendment?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if it's not statutory, statutory required.
Right.
I mean, we, we can be sued, we can, it can be optional to develop.
Yeah.
So if it's, if it's a single landlord, for example, they could waive that because it's not necessarily required to do that. But if it's a major landlord, that's, because if they're changing a major land use to something to become different.
Yeah. Well, that's something, well, of course, you know, the whole purpose about going through this exercise now is because there's nothing on the books about how we handle land use plan amendments.
Yeah.
We, as opposed to zoning, but you raised an interesting point, maybe there's a threshold of, of a type of site where, you know, either the staff could present a request to waive some of the requirements and stuff, but I'm not sure what that would be. Let me just make a note of that and we can kind of come back to that. This is all gonna come back to you and I'll, I'm gonna try to digest this and come up with something that's somewhat presentable.
Well, something else to consider as well is, you know, we require ourselves to review land use plan every five years. So we're gonna read it and we consider making changes. We help by the same things that we have to put out notices to anybody that we suggest change the land use plan to, written notices, just like anybody putting a land use change request with.
I would say probably if you're, if you're gonna have, consider some type of land use plan or amendment process that would go through you and up to the council, I think, yes, you would want to include the community as part of that.
I mean, but specifically have to have a community meeting specifically for that. For instance, our last land use plan change, right, we added the pilot's part, right? And we did that through the planning board without, I mean, without any official request, did it through the planning board and then through council and voted to add that as high-density commercial. If we adopt this, before we could do that, we'd have to send out notices to all adjacent owner, right, we would, the land.
That was, that was this property here.
Yeah, to a less.
Okay, yeah.
We also did adopt institutional as well.
Okay, yeah, before I got, okay.
And that was just, of course, that was the map where I also had land use plan changes to cover there. And so, and so if we did land use plan change, right, so maybe there's an overall word change in there, would we have to notify everybody in the community?
Uh, well, it'd be, it'd be, you could probably, probably analogous to how you handle zone map change versus a zone text change. So you, you don't, if it's a change of the ordinance wording, you don't post all the properties, I mean, or you, you just advertise it some ways and you post it in city hall and you post, you advertise in the newspaper and that sort of thing.
The text can be important, though, it was one of the text changes about adding a different commercial thing.
Oh, absolutely, nothing is not important, but in terms of the posting requirements, advertising is a little bit different, so.
Yeah, so I just want to bring that up, just trying to get all the aspects of that.
How about in terms of, when you're talking about the land use plan, the first step, if we're, if it's just a land use plan amendment, how about, what do you think about prohibiting any discussion of specific uses?
One hundred percent.
Okay. How about if there is a denial of the land use plan amendment, that you can't come back next month for another one, like an anti-harassment feature? And you, like you have that in zoning now. You know, if somebody is denied, they can't come back to the same zoning in two years or something like that.
Really?
True. But we do have a timeline, right? And you can come back after a particular period.
Yes.
And it's gotta be something different.
Yes, it's like, it's like, you know, you know what someone's talking about, it's like, you can't come back in two years for the same and three years for a different or something like that, a different zoning, so. Something, I'll, I'll try to find something that's similar to what you have in zoning or something like that.
That is legal, we can protect.
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah.
Again, I'm always very cautious that we're not sending a message that we are anti-development or we are for smart development, good development, development that's consistent with the character of our village. And so whatever we put forward should be structured or flexible, kind of something like that.
That's a good point, and fair to both the community and the property owners in the process too, so. Okay, anything else that, I'll try to write something up and kind of start getting an outline, I'll try to present that next month if that's acceptable. If you have any other thoughts, please email me or give me a call, okay?
Yes, one thing I wanted to clarify on the notices, something we changed about two years ago. If you have a home that's gonna be affected by a zoning change, but that home is owned by person X, but it's being rented out to someone else, we're, I guess, assuming that the owner of the property is gonna let the land, landlord is gonna let the people that used to live on the property know what's going on, and sometimes that wasn't happening. So we said, if we know that there's someone other than the homeowner living on the property, we will send a special notice specifically to that address, not necessarily to the homeowner, because the homeowner could be anywhere, but the person that lives at that address needs to be notified.
We're talking about zoning change, do you put a sign right in front of their property?
Well, yeah, we're also going to mail a notice to somebody within a specific bubble.
Gotcha.
Uh, but if we're sending it to the homeowner, but that's not the person who lives on the property or in the home, they may not know about it because the person doesn't send, the owner of the property doesn't let his tenant know. If we know that this is a tenant-type situation, we mail something to that address as well. Because there's a situation where there's eight homes owned by a developer over here and there was a zoning change or proposed zoning change. Residents didn't know anything about it because they were renting.
That's a, that's a real situation, it's tough though to sometimes get those current tenants. And I don't know, zoning, I believe zoning only requires my owner notification, so you might want to be careful about, again, it's down to the process, it might seem too onerous to, you might come in for change without, we would give that.
I would rather over-communicate than under-communicate. I think that was the...
Isn't that, don't we have a sign?
Sign?
Yes, it says a change in the...
Then, who's the next one?
Me and Rose.
Rose. Those procedures.
Yeah, section fifteen point four, the zoning ordinance, notes that the council has the ability to amend planning board rules and procedures. And the council recently gone through their rules and procedures that indicated to be interested in any comments that you as a board may have on planning board rules and procedures. So I brought, put this back up on the agenda, kind of gave you a little bit of background information, as well as a copy of the current planning board rules and procedures. If you had any comments this evening to record, uh, I think there's any little time framework when they're expecting, you know, a formal comment report back from the planning board. If you are ready with comments this evening, I'd be glad to take them down, otherwise if you'd like to, then we'll have another month to take a look at these and get back, that'd be fine, or whatever, it's your pleasure.
So help, help me understand then, why's it coming back to us?
The council had expressed interest in your opinions before they had, you know, were adopted any other changes to the rules and procedures.
But we've already reviewed these, whether February and then April, okay?
Yeah, yeah, there was, there's some specific issue that, and I didn't, I think I, I think the idea was that if there are any other comments that you may wish to make or any other changes at that point, is that, am I saying that right, Cheryl?
Yeah, I think there's a few things in here you might want to look at, huh?
Yeah.
Um, can I, can I say, on the three areas that might consider for amending in the first page of the memorandum, there, it says regarding attendance, the rules state that missing three meetings could be grounds for requesting removal of the member, would it be good to explicitly have some opportunities or process for members to explain or defend absences prior to the order? But I think I see that a deal. I mean, I, you know, to have some way, I mean, you mind, I mean, there's a ton of reasons that you may not be able to...
My experience is that a lot of times these rules and procedures on different planning board will, you know, express numerical meeting dates, that's kind of the metric of membership, but there's not always a mechanism whereby you can take into consideration extending circumstances or schedule conflicts.
Right.
And you, so I just, not, it's, it's not only for the benefit of the individual member, but I think it can also help the cohesion of the board, because you, you, you know, I think staff and elected officials really appreciate the time and the willingness of planning board members and other advisory board members to serve. And I think it's just kind of recognition that, you know, this isn't the only thing you do with your life, that this is in the context of your bigger life and wants to hang on to good people.
Do you have some format or something that that would appear, that, you know, some, some ideas about how that would look or what that would look like?
Well, if you look at rule five, it says if a member is absent for two consecutive meetings, the chairman may direct the secretary to notify that member in writing of their absence, and if such member fails to attend the next meeting, the planning board by majority vote may request the position be vacated and not a replacement be made by village council. Is that what you mean?
And then I think...
Yeah, it's just, in his rules and procedure suggestions, he wrote kind of number one on the front page of the memorandum that he determined, rules and procedure.
Oh, you're going back to the February backup?
I'm sorry?
You're looking at the February backup?
I attached that, attached it to the material, yeah.
I didn't have that.
Okay, yeah. And I think what I said along the lines was that adding a sense to that section that you just read, Cheryl, about that the member have an opportunity to kind of explain absences and...
Well, possibly maybe state certain ones that would be acceptable, you know, like, or something, you know, to just flesh that out, you know? Like if you have a death in the family or something, or you have a child conflict.
The way it's written now, it's not a must, it's a may, so I think it kind of takes, it gives you that leeway that it doesn't seem like it's something that you...
Case is a better word.
I agree with that, it's hard to foresee all the potential...
Yeah, right.
Potential reasons.
You can have it stay at six months.
Right. All right, any other comments? What is our, maybe I'm missing here, I know we discussed a couple times, Tim and Cheryl, what's our time limit to review curfew? We've discussed it a couple times.
Thirteen days.
It's thirteen, still thirteen days, right?
Well, right.
Put them together.
To get our...
Oh, yes.
So we've discussed changing that, right? Is it the time to discuss that during our rules and procedures?
When we first put this together back in February, that was one of the pressing items about changing the review schedule, and that was, the bigger picture was trying to make sure that, or try to encourage, not encourage, but just accommodate people coming through the process, that they'd be able to get you one month and then get council the following month without having to skip a month, again, it's turned out a matter of timing. And in looking at the details of that, we changed the review requirement, the submitted requirements for the council, but still, I think we changing, we did need to change the submitted requirements for planning board that it didn't really have an effect on the process. So the real key was shortening the time before council submitted.
And of course, then the other impact I think would be, you know, we see a lot of requests, right, like we don't have a body letter yet, or we don't have something. And we've really pressed back and said, it's thirteen days, it's a matter of procedure, right? And so, you know, we get a lot of pushback. I can't speak very well, but I think I'm still okay with that, I think I'm still okay with it. You have to have everything completed on checklist, the thirteen days regardless. So while we're discussing that, let's make sure it's also a part of it. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. All right. Then, is that, then did actually I have then to come back with a more formal change or, or we have that?
Well, I guess I'm not hearing any other additional changes back here that you're really suggesting.
So we're saying leave it as is or?
Yeah, yeah, unless you've... Yeah, unless you've, and I think unless you'd like to take a look at it again, if you didn't have a chance, we could always do it next month. There's no timeframe or time, or deadline with the council. But if you're okay with, with the way it is now, we, we just kind of move on.
Good point, there's no pressing matter to make any changes.
Right.
It doesn't do us any, any good to go to council and say, well, good, we can just wait till next month and maybe hear from some of our other planning board members who couldn't attend today.
If you'd like to do that, that's, that's certainly okay, I think, on terms of.
A little.
That Cheryl is happy.
Too late to see you next month.
Yeah.
I did think so, you're missing three members still. We're monitoring here. Okay. So, uh, next month. It was just in, uh, number seven, other business?
Yes. I'd like to just kind of share with you some of the diagrams I, I put together for the council before that, that was real quick, that we did have a public hearing on the berms and administrative subdivisions. No one showed up, council adopted, so those are law of the land now. And what I would like to do though, just to kind of take a few minutes and, um, as part of the discussion of conservation subdivision, we, um, council had talked about the applicability of, of the conventional subdivision standards as well as the new, um, conservation standards. And we did talk about the differences between the most recent version of the planning board and, and some of the versions that the council had looked at. So, uh, I, I thought it might be helpful to develop some graphics that would kind of show how does it, how's it look on the ground, literally, and how does it affect certain parcels? So I, I took it, uh, looked at five different sites and developed some, um, analyses of that. And so, is on there, you can't really have that?
No, you'll have to look.
Okay. I think they all have to crane their necks around, sorry about that. And the first, uh, the first slide I looked at is on Waxon and Trail Road. We're just, uh, above near Will Plyo Road where it's sort of down there, kind of down by Newtown in that area. And Cheryl, could you, um, now you've got the large, almost sixty-five acres there. And could you do the next slide, show the aerial?
If it does, I guess that's. Sorry.
Be able to do, now I'm going to flip back to this, I want to show the aerial.
I don't know if I can. Okay. Let me try again.
Uh, let me see. The next slide.
Can you just, we'll push it down, but the slide right there.
What, what do you want me to do?
Want me to go to the next slide?
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, to see, yeah.
You may see it on your monitor, does it show you on your monitor?
Yes.
Yeah. How do you?
Let's see, now that's, let's, okay, yeah, okay, that's the first. So this is the aerial, and, you know, there's the, you can see from the aerial, the.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Is this the page you want or the next?
The next one, I'll show the aerial real quickly again. And I'm going to, in each, each of these sites, I've got the shabby aerial as well as the plot plan map. And so, and you'll notice that the area showing where the existing vegetation is on that site. And of course, the parcel working as an outline in yellow. And, uh, fronting on Waxon Trail there. Can you go back to the, you know, the site? And so, part of each of the site, I kind of did a brief analysis. Uh, I, uh, this is on, the site's on the R forty, about, almost sixty-five acres. I took a look at and evaluated the tree canopy, first of all, because you have the ordinance and the tree canopy is outlined in green there. And I've cleverly labeled it as tree canopy. And so, I, I balled it and said, that's about sixteen acres out of sixty-five acres, you know. And then there is a provision in the subdivision ordinance that says if you have, you take a look at your site and if it's covered within a certain percentage of tree canopy, then of that tree canopy, you've got to save a certain amount. And so, for instance, if you're, if you're like a ninety-five percent covered in tree canopy, you have to save like ten percent. If you're only ten percent existing tree canopy, you've got to save ninety percent of it. So the idea is to try to keep about ten, eight, ten percent of the site in that natural tree, ten to twenty percent of the tree canopy. So it's kind of inverse proportion as you, as it works out. Uh, then in terms of that provision of the subdivision, I read earlier about how you exempt certain things from consideration of your, your cap, lot calculation. Along the roadway, I've shown, first of all, a fifty-foot buffer. That's what your, the existing subdivision requirement is for any subdivision site greater than ten acres. And then the one hundred foot view shed is the provision for the conservation subdivision requirements under the board's council's option. Uh, I think the planning board version did not have the view shed specifically, but the view shed was to try to give that impression from the roadway of greenery, you know, and this is, this is kind of a Weddington approach in how they have structured theirs. So, and that.
So that means the structures can't be built within a hundred feet, is that right?
Correct. And that's a, that is a tree area as much as possible. So whereas the, the existing fifty-foot buffer yard is a planted buffer, presumably that view shed is also going to be a planted area. And in some cases, you'll notice on other properties, there's an existing tree canopy that's in either part or all of that area. So in that case, it would be retained. In this case, well, we'd have to figure out what to do since you, you'd have to, how to plant it, what, what would be the density of planting?
So, so what you're saying is from the Waxon and Trail Road, a hundred foot is the view shed. In that view shed, you still have your buffer. That's where the burn will be. There'll be some sort of tree save or planting save. And also that's more likely, might be where the right of way is for the utilities?
Well, no, that, that view shed is simply, as I said, a green view area. It's intended to provide some blockage. The idea is to try to maintain the, the comprehensive plans, idea of a rural residential area, and you want to maintain that from the roadway. Because that's, that's how people perceive, you know, a physical area to a large extent by how you drive through an area. So they want to increase, enhance that green effect through that.
But what he's asking is, so within that hundred foot view shed, it includes the fifty-foot buffer here, and you can also have utilities within that?
Uh, you can run utilities.
Right.
You can, but that's not, but, yeah, that might be, yeah, the main thing of calling it out under the conservation subdivision is to maintain a green area.
And what we, we know about the view shed is even though you have the fifty-foot buffer, if we had the fifty-foot buffer which is required and you had a burn, you wouldn't build the back of the house or the front of the house to the buffer.
Yeah, no, no house, no home to be in that area and no lots to be planted in that area. That would be common area, so, yeah. Now, the, the tree canopy is another provision of the, of the subdivision ordinance, and it is not excluded as part of your lotting, cap, lot calculation. So it's included that. Uh, and it can be within, say, so, so that tree canopy can be part of the rear of a, of a property. Now, now the, the way the ordinance says that you've got to maintain, say, in this case, you've got to maintain, I calculated about eight acres of that. So presumably, as you're looking at the site, if I was going to lay this out logically, this is all going to be considered tree canopy. You want to take that within the buffer, you count that. And presumably, you could have some lots that would back up against that, so the rear of your property could be planted in that. And the same thing here. But you're going to maintain probably some pretty good chunks of land. And that's kind of the intent of the conservation subdivision. It's not to just do your strip long roadway, but you're trying to encourage retention of substantial natural areas, you know, kind of livestock or.
And the opposite with this would be on Cutherson Road, where we have a high density senior houses, whatever you want to refer to, but there is not a view shed because you look from Cutherson Road and you see the houses.
Right, right, yeah. And that's, that's what you have with your existing buffer yard. And so, fifty feet sounds like a long way, but it's, it's not that far. It's probably, you know, you're talking about the length of this road, this room probably, you know. And, and the, the existing buffer yard requirement is not a true, um, visual buffer. I mean, it's, it's intended to break up the facades or road and, and to provide a sense of green, but it's, I think the view shed is intended more, something more intense. Uh, and the whole idea of it, as you know, the conservation subdivision is to allow you the same lot count that was in a smaller area and to get some types of benefits from the, that. And so in terms of looking at, and watching the other places excluded, there, you've got the buffer area. We, we took out from this area about twenty-two percent of roads and potential, um, stormwater ponds. And then, as the, in a conservation area, it also has a provision of a certain percentage of, of tree retention, a conservation area. So, uh, so I, I kind of had, kind of had to estimate what you can do. So, and to, to come out for that sixty-five acres, so your, your, uh, buildable area is going to be around somewhere between forty-six and forty-nine acres. So you're losing fifteen acres, something like that, from the builder's perspective. And so, that lot yield is going to be around forty-nine or forty-eight. Now, the difference that the mayor alluded to between the lot count, in this case, it calculated that, that a conventional subdivision would get forty-nine lots, whereas the conservation subdivision would only get forty-eight. And the reason for that is that your, um, view shed constitutes a bigger buffer yard. So you're taking more out for that. Uh, plus, there's an additional two acres, I estimated, from the buffer yard or the conservation area. So again, that's reduced out. So, uh, that's the way it calculates in a strict sense. That's something that I think can easily be, you know, written out so where there is, there is some, you know, equality between the number of lots that you yield neither way, so.
Tim, is that, is that expecting that the lots under the conservation will be forty thousand square feet, or is that expecting there will be more of an average of thirty thousand or twenty-five thousand?
Well, there are two different.
Or is it calculated at forty?
Well, the, the, the way this is set up is that you take the, the lot yield is based upon conventional subdivision. That's the total number. And then the flexibility is in your lot size. And you recall that, I think, in your, in the planning board version, thirty percent of the lots would be allowed to be thirty thousand square feet, the balance would be forty thousand square feet. In the council version, I think that thirty percent were going to be twenty thousand square feet, and the balance could go down to thirty thousand square feet, if I'm not mistaken. So there's more flexibility in the council version. Yours is, your version is closer to the conventional subdivision approach. Now, the other, the other part of that, now I'll mention, is that, uh, some of the flexibility from the developer's perspective is, is the lot dimensions. Uh, if you can shrink that, the width of a lot, you can get more lots on a roadway and you can cut some, some of the infrastructure costs from the developer, and that's an incentive for them to use this process. Uh, both the planning board and council version, though, maintain a hundred and twenty-foot wide lot width, which is a disincentive for a developer to use this approach of this type. Yes, sir?
I, I understand it. I'm just going to use the mayor's neighborhood as an example. Candela, right, would look totally different if it was set up to be in the conservation subdivision. Because you don't have the view shed, you don't have so-and-so the burn. And if you were reconfigured the way lots were, you'd probably come out to be pretty much the same yield of houses, we'll just say. And the, the lot size is good to be definitely smaller, but you would have the view shed, the buffer, if you know where that area is needing the criteria.
Yeah, well, the, the view, the view shed does not require a buffer. It is, it is a green space, but you could put a buffer in there, but it's not required. But yeah, I'd say in Candela, generally, you'd have a wider, a longer setback from the road, from Potter Road, you know, from fifty feet to a hundred foot before you have the first lot. Uh, some of the lots would be smaller in size conceivably, twenty or thirty thousand square feet. You might have reduced lot width, you might have more, uh, area on the edge. And as I, but as I understand, before Candela was developed, it had been graded and it was not a natural forested area. So there would need to be some type of replanting area. So, anyway, before we move on to the next lot, I don't want to dwell too long on this and, you know, get too long wind on this stuff.
So for instance, you correct, or I stood with some quick math, this property, it says sixty-five acres, year yield plan yields forty-nine homes.
Yes.
There are forty.
Yeah.
Um, so if we stood with what the planning board said, it said thirty percent of those could go down to thirty thousand square feet. So if I do that math, it means that you have an additional three point seven acres of land that's not developed, that's conserved, that's concerned. So that's, that's actually pretty substantial. I mean, that's, you know, that's, was that sixty-five?
And I believe the difference, the difference in how you all, uh, planning board recommend it was to have fifteen percent conservation area and the council version was ten percent conservation set aside plus the hundred, having a greater view shed. I don't think you all had the hundred foot, hundred foot view shed off the roadway. Here's another site, and we won't dwell on this too long. Weddington Road, uh, this is, I guess, to be northwest of Price Mill on that and right next to Heather Glen. And so this, uh, this property here is ninety acres. It's got about, I estimate about twenty-three acres of canopy, and I'll put it's about eleven acres that would be retained. Uh, the dark, the blue is your floodway and your floodway fringe, so you have an additional set of, uh, natural resource impacts on this. I estimate about twenty acres of roadway and buffer yards in common open areas. Uh, you have your, your, difference between your fifty-foot buffer yard and your one hundred foot view shed. You'll see that this is a little bit on the south edge of the property is naturally wooded. The rest of the buffer and view shed, actually about half of that, the rest of the northern edge would have to be planted. Uh, I got a lot yield, in this case, difference between about sixty-three under conventional subdivision and about fifty-seven under the conservation subdivision. But again, I think, you know, that's minimal, we can kind of make that equitable. This has, you can see the, where the probable lot configuration, if you wanted to retain that, the other environmentally sensitive areas, having a smaller lot size kind of sandwich in that the other graded area would be, could be beneficial, so. Anyway, can you, can you, show me the aerial real quickly, just to kind of see what this looks like in ninety-five aerial? That's, I think that's the other one, yeah, go back. That's the, that's back on Waxon and Trail. Go. Thank you. I think this had been graded a long time ago with some plant, replanting with some pines, if I'm not mistaken. So can you go ahead and go with it to the next site, please? We're down on Cutherson Road, uh, where Newtown and Cutherson, uh, this is a long piece of land. It is about thirty-five acres. And as you see, the green, it's, it's heavily wooded on the southern edge, but you have a lot of road frontage, both on Newtown and Cutherson, uh, which requires both in terms of fifty-foot and a hundred-foot view shed, a lot of land dedicated for that. And most of that frontage is not forested. So you'd have to have some type of planting in that area, so it's going to be fairly expensive to develop and meet our standards one way or the other. Uh, conversely, you have a lot of the tree canopy area that has to be retained, about ten, eight, I estimate about thirty-one of the thirty-five acres, uh, right now, and ten acres of that would have to be retained. A lot count within this of about twenty-three, twenty-four lots. And again, and there's a water feature on this up in the northwest corner of the property. A lot of trees would be removed of, uh, probably either under the tree canopy, uh, the conservation subdivision or conventional. Want you to hit the aerial of that one, please? So you see the, the natural features there for the canopy, the thick forest in the northwest. Now, the next property is immediately to the west on, also fighting on Newtown. And this particular property is roughly forty acres. It's about ninety-five percent covered in tree canopy, and you have a pond feature. So much of the view shed along that area, along Newtown, is already to make your full canopy. So this would be a situation where you have a lot of existing tree canopy, about nine acres of that would be retained. And.
What's the closest question there on this one, Newtown?
Oh, we're just off, Newtown and Cuthbertson, just off the map to the right. See, the other property we just talked about is right adjacent to it, to the right on the west of the screen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're adjacent to each other. And again, about nineteen, eighteen lots yield out of this.
Well, Tim, what size lots are you, are you figuring on, forty thousand square feet, thirty thousand?
That is how you calculate the lot yield. After you remove all the constraints from that, that we do to count what is the parcel, then you apply that forty thousand square feet to that, and you come up with the lot yield. In this case, you would, out of the roughly forty-acre site, you're going to be removing about twenty, the twenty-three acres as unbuildable. So your forty thousand is applied to the residual roughly twenty acres. So about half of that lot is going to be undevelopable under our current rules.
But the whole point of conservation is.
And then, pardon me, and then of that, that gives you a number. And then, you can, under the conservation subdivision, go with either the twenty thousand or thirty thousand lot. Have more flexibility in how you arrange that on the site. And presumably, that would give you the great, more flexibility to keep more of that, the tree canopy unstirred.
And that's what, what the council, that's a reduction in lot.
Yes, reduction of lot size, yeah.
But, so you know what your max is from your forty thousand square foot yield, but when you go to the smaller lots, it's hard to say exactly how many you don't have, because it might be an average of thirty thousand square feet, might be an average of twenty-eight thousand or thirty-two thousand, whatever. So you can fit more lots, even though it's less acreage, you can still fit the lots that you more allow.
And you're also taking account for the terrain in it, because that's not flat land, that rises to the back.
Yeah, I didn't really do it for these, because I was just looking at it from planned view, but there's, you know, there's enough of a constraint just in what we have there, but I wanted to give you a feel for that, so. So, so it's, that's kind of where we are with that. Once we do, so the last site, and this, and we'll wind this up here. This is at, this site is actually substandard in terms of the size. This is about a twelve-acre site. Everything else is larger sites. And you recall that, I think, there's a minimum acreage of either ten or, you know, fifteen or, I think fifteen acres between both. In this case, you have a lot of constraints, the configuration, the shape of this property is really difficult to work with. If you're trying to plot something out, you've got tree canopy on both ends of that. You have a water body pond, you've got some, again, floodway, floodway frames. Right in kind of the middle, off Gold Mine, you have a little bit of area where you could lay out some lots. In this situation, it's, you know, a smaller lot size would really help with being able to, because much of that land really is not very usable. Just by virtue of that. So excluding, say, smaller sites, probably makes sense in that regard. This site just has so many, you know, constraints, it's just difficult to really get much of the lot yield on it, so.
There's a question.
Yes, sir.
Can the hundred-foot view shed, if we, depending on the width of the roadway? For example, if it's a major roadway, and you have to go from behind that to go to.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And the ordinance talks about, you know, major, minor thoroughfare. So I would, I'm not sure what the status of Gold Mine is, if it's a, if it's a minor thoroughfare or not. And it'd be good to make sure we tie it to something that's really readily identifiable and on a map or something, so.
Because that improves the lot.
Yeah, yeah. The tie makes a really good point, and just in other ways, making sure there's some flexibility in how you apply this. Because even though you get some standards together, you know, the guy at the counter working with the property, it's good to be able to have some flexibility, not that you're trying to give away the store, but just to make things work sometime, so. Any other, I think, kind of moved a little longer than I expected, but any other questions or thoughts? As I said, the council are just looking at this, and we're going to come back to it, you know, have at least one more discussion about that.
Sure, you will have to.
Very well, it's my property, I love that.
I will, yeah.
Do you have any?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so, is there anything else on that? On that topic there, is there other business? Tim? That's all?
Oh, yeah.
Alright, and does, is there anything else, all from Russian, New Jersey?
I should.
Alright, I got a second, sorry. Alright, all finished? All of us? Thank you.
The other day, I was thinking of you. The trees.